Take this time to welcome all of our guests tonight. We certainly appreciate each and every one of you for being here. And we're going to have our pledge of allegiance. Someone asked Tammy to lead us in that, and then Ms. Karen Wheaton's going to give her indication.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, tonight, more than anything else, we worship you. And we acknowledge your lordship. Your lordship of our lives and this city. And Father, we thank you for your word. Your word tells us that in all of our ways that we are to acknowledge you, and you will direct our path. So tonight, we acknowledge you, and we ask you. We ask you for wisdom. Your word tells us, if any man like wisdom, to let him ask of God against a woman liberally. So tonight, Father, we ask for wisdom for our lives individually, for our mayor, for our city council, and all of our city leaders. We pray for wisdom and revelation, the eyes of our understanding would be enlightened, and we can believe this city. And Father, I pray that as they make decisions, they make decisions led by your Holy Spirit. And over our city and over this meeting tonight, we pray this: Let your kingdom come, and let your will be done, on earth and Hamilton, as it is in heaven, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, first item on agenda tonight is to approve amendments from our last meeting. Is there a motion to approve those amendments?
I'm with a motion.
Okay, man. Is there a second?
Second.
I don't think I had Tammy first. All in favor, Seattle? Thank you. Second item on agenda tonight is to recommend us to approve accounts payable bills. Is there a motion to approve those bills?
I'll have a motion.
Okay, Tammy, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Any discussion? All in favor, Seattle? Thank you. Third thing I have is Karen Wheaton. Karen Wheaton, just a second. We have Reed Kevin R. with us from Capital, from Mercer Capital, with our bond issue. And Reed's been here about all day, and he has to drive to Montgomery, so I'm telling him I moved in. And we've had to sign our documents today on our bond issue. We finally got finished and signed those about 2:00 today. So Reed, I'm gonna let you give an update on what's going on now from this point forward, and where we was, and so you can, I know you've got a long trip.
Sure. Well, thank you, Mayor. First of all, appreciate the opportunity to be here and to work for the city again. I will say your bond sale was a very big success. You have a really good team in place, and I just want to say thank you to everybody that worked so hard to pull this together. Scott Hunt spent a lot of time reviewing the documents from a legal perspective. Jan has pulled more information than she probably ever cared to pull in her lifetime, but she has been fabulous to work with. Bond attorney did a great job. Ron Kanter, Mayor, you have been very, very helpful participating in all the meetings and giving us guidance along the way. So it went very well. The sale went well. The rates were lower than what we had discussed when you had authorized us to go into market. The net for you is payments over the life are going to be about $250,000 less than the projections we had at the last council meeting when you asked us to move forward. So the name Hamilton is received well in the bond market. Some of that's your credit rating, but people know Hamilton, there was good demand. I'm gonna tell you that our sales desk did a very good job. There's been a lot of supply of these bonds lately, and they had to go outside the realm of the normal investors to buy Alabama bonds and get some national buyers to come in and accept some rates that actually benefited the city quite a bit. So we had a very successful sale. On the refinancing, we talked about around $150,000. That ended up being closer to $200,000. So we dropped the interest rate on that, went from a 3.9 down to a 2.4. So again, you had about $3 million and some change in debt out there that we lowered the rate on that. So everything went really, really well with this. On the agenda tonight is a, I believe, Mayor, if you want me to address this, is you've got some 2007 bonds that are out there. Those can't be refinanced until the next calendar year, okay? And so just for tax law reasons, they can't be done until January 1. We could sell a refinancing of those in the early December timeframe. You've got about 3.3 million outstanding and 4% using the rates we just achieved for you in the market. That would generate somewhere around $250,000 in savings. Not stretching the term out, they'd pay off at the exact same date as scheduled to now. It's just that you would pay less money over that life, about $250,000 less. So just lower the payments on it. What this would do tonight is just allow the bond documents to get put together. We're gonna need to go back to the rating agency and tell them about this. They'll probably want to have a quick review. It won't be as extensive as this time, because they've just gone through it. But we'll get all that paperwork put together, and then we would request permission to come back to a meeting probably in November and give you an update on the market. And if rates have held steady and you like the savings amount, then we could go out into the market. If rates have changed and gone up and you're not happy with the savings, then we would just put everything on hold and sit and watch the market. So it's just an opportunity to save some money, and that's what's on the agenda tonight. But again, I'm happy to answer the questions. Again, it went very, very well, and y'all have done a very good job running this city. And that shows in your credit rating. It shows in the way that the bonds are received in the market, and I just applaud you for that.
The Reed, the money they've, we borrow, the extra money will be coming in, what, a couple of days?
In two days. It'll be wired on Thursday. That's when this issue is set to close. So it'll be there and be available, be spent at your pace, whatever pace you choose to pull it down.
So the total amount of savings would be $250,000?
Well, that's...
All of this, or just...
Yeah, on the refinancing, yes, on the refinancing of the '07 bonds, right?
Yeah. '06.
Well, the '07 is the one you, we just did the '06s.
That's where it's at.
The savings on that one was $195,000.
Okay.
And the savings on the '07, using the same rates, would be about $250,000.
But you said it wouldn't be extended?
Right. Not extending, keeping the payoff date the same as it is now, just lowering the payments between now and then. You know, the rate on those is out at a 4%. It would take it down to about a 2.49. That's if rates held. Again, all this does tonight is let the paperwork be put together. We'd still come back before the council, before we went into the market to update you on the savings and make sure that it was...
It's not giving you a thought to do anything yet. It's giving you a thought to...
Put the paperwork together, get the rate in place.
Then come back to us and watch the market. And if it's a good thing, if it goes up between now and then, we'll be needing refinancing.
Right. If it goes up between now and then, then we would just sit and watch it. We'd have all the paperwork done, and if the rates dipped a little bit, we could catch it pretty much on a moment's notice.
Well, I appreciate you, Reed. I've enjoyed working with you.
Thanks, same here.
And your host staff has been easy to work with. Explained everything perfectly, so...
Thank you.
You know, I appreciate working with you in these last few months.
Thank you.
As far as you've done, it gives us an opportunity to do some capital improvements that we might not have been able to do, having not borrowed the extra money. So I appreciate the council supporting this endeavor. If anybody has any questions for me. Okay. We're gonna go on to the next thing on our agenda, which is the resolution that you just explained. It's an opportunity for us to refinance. Did you say at first year, November?
You could sell in early December, but you gotta close it after January.
Close it January. All this does is give us an opportunity to go ahead and work, is that correct?
Right.
And this will be Resolution 2014-9-2, and be going to agree with them to get our paperwork ready. So when it does come down, we'll be ready to move forward. So I can read part of it. So the city has therefore issued a form, forming $150,000 general obligation funding, refunding warrants, 2007, day-to-day, 1st, 2007, principally outstanding in aggregate, principal amount of $3,520,000. And what this will be doing at the proper time is give us an opportunity to maybe get a lower interest rate. Right now it's about 4%. If we go to 2.49, we'd be leaving the same amount of time on this bond issue, not adding anything to it, and not stressing it out, just refinancing the total amount for a cheaper rate. All the savings, about $250,000. So would you be on motion to approve this resolution to give Mercer Capital funding to...
Mayor, I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
Does, do you keep the same bank local, or do you bid that out, or do you use the same that we used before?
I'll try to read, answer it.
The warrant, so the involvement of local bank, the accounts that are set up there is they make monthly payments into those accounts, which is where the payments on a bond issue come due twice a year. Your interest payments come due every six months, and your principal payments come due once a year. What's been the practice here in Hamilton, which we think is a good practice, and the bond investors like it, is for the city to make monthly payments in advance, so that when that interest payment due date comes, you've got the money in the bank to make the payment. Same with the principal. When that principal due date comes, you've been putting 1/12 of the payment aside all year long, so when the payment comes, it's there. So those are set up to go at First National Bank. That's where they have, that fund has typically been held. So that's...
But on this particular bond issue, if we wanted to change banks, we could.
You can do it if you want.
Right. This doesn't particularly...
Ties, ties down, but it doesn't...
It does tie down to one bank.
Okay.
Hello, Michael. Okay. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, one more, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, Seattle?
I think I've studied too closely. Okay. It's more like you...
Okay. At this time, Reed, we're finished. Now we've got a long trip, so if you want to leave...
Appreciate it. Thank you. We'll approve.
If I can check this out, the governor. Karen, if you would, please, ma'am, if you would, just, I want you to come and give us an update on your project. And also, several weeks ago, a couple of months ago, when the governor was here, we met, and you got to ask a question about natural resources, and he said, put a plan together. And then we've had a few meetings with you, but the council hasn't had an update of what you've discussed and some of your group has discussed, so I wanted you to do that, plus give us an update of your projects up there.
Sure.
I'll just turn it over to you.
Well, we've, as most of you know, we've purchased several of the downtown buildings in Hamilton, mostly the two-story buildings, for the purpose of putting our students from around school ministry upstairs and making the upstairs of our buildings downtown dorms for our students. So thankfully, we have, as you can probably see, we've been downtown dog. We've begun working in the coffee buzz, and it's supposed to be done, hopefully, in about two weeks, probably not more than three, but we're looking at two weeks is what we're living for. And we have, the girls are already waiting to go in that dorm, so it's full already, as we speak. And then after that, we look to beginning the brown building, where it used to be Brown's Jewelry Store, and we'll be renovating that upstairs. Downstairs will be a coffee shop and a bakery that's going on the left. And then, of course, Lois Furniture, she'll stay downstairs in her furniture store, just as it is, but upstairs will be for the students. And then, of course, we have other buildings also. That's just the next three that's on the agenda. Of course, the old, well, the old boarding house, I always, for whatever reason, call it the mission house, down there, right here on the main street. We are planning also for that to be a two-story dorm. I was just telling Tim that we plan to remove the buildings adjacent to that and try to save the red brick, the two-story, if we can. We're gonna do everything we can to save that, the historical part of it, and make that a two-story dorm for boys, affectionately called John Wesley Hall, just FYI. And, but anyway, it's gonna be a great addition to our city. I believe it's gonna bring life, a lot of students, young men and women training for ministry, that will be shopping downtown and eating downtown and walking our streets. And it'll also bring their families to Hamilton, their friends to come visit, which can do nothing but help. So I believe it's gonna be a blessing for everyone and for the whole city. That's where we are right now, with more plans to follow, but I don't have time to tell you about all of them. As my husband tells me, I wear people out with my vision, so I'll just stop there for a minute.
How was last week? We had people from New York here.
We do. You know, in every...
All over.
We did. In all of our conferences, we average about 24 states per conference of people that come from that big, wide span to Hamilton. 24 states is a lot of states that come here, so we've been blessed to have over 300,000 people come to Hamilton to come through the ramp and visit our city and hopefully impact it in many good ways. So, does that answer the questions about... Okay. Well, let me get started on just some things that are on my heart. First of all, thank you, Mayor Williams, and to the council for letting me come and just share some things and ideas that are on my mind about the city and some opportunities that I think we have. You know, I think we all can say there's just a good atmosphere right now in our city, a positive turn to things that are happening. I hear on the streets from different people, it's just a lot of encouraging words, a lot of fresh hope that I feel excited about. I think our downtown is beautiful. It's a work in progress, but I think we've got a great start to a beautiful downtown. The Downtown Revitalization Committee has done a great job, along with a lot of other people, that contributed their votes and their support to what's happening downtown, and I think it's gonna benefit everybody. So to that, just a big thank you, and to say that we're very encouraged for what's happening. You know, and even in this meeting tonight, we know there's a lot of thoughts and ideas, and even though some may differ, I think we're all in here for two main reasons, and that is that we love this city and we want to be a part of making it better. And that's really why I'm here tonight, too. You know, we've been, you referred to the governor coming. One of the things that we said to the governor that day was, remember, we thought, we've been for years wanting to see Hamilton prosper economically and waiting and praying for industries to come our way, and we believe they are coming. But while we worked and waited, I think that there's some things we can do to draw attention to this part of the state, and from, not only from the state, but also just the surrounding area, and that is developing our natural resources. So I won't drag this on, but let me just say, you'll have to forgive me for probably being in the ministry the way I think, but I can't help but think about when the children of Israel were in bondage and needing deliverance. And the first, one of the first things God says to Moses in the process of their freedom was this, he said, "What do you have in your hand?" And you just, he just started with what he had to bring great change to a lot of people. And I think for us right now, as a city, we can start there, because we have some wonderful things that are in our hand that if we're not careful, we can overlook. You know, I've traveled a lot in the last 35 years, and one of the things I've noticed in my travels in other cities, it's always been intriguing to me, is how much more other cities do with less than what we have, simply because they're willing to invest or give attention to maybe something as simple as their history or the natural resources they have. So when I look at Hamilton, as part of, as what we have in our hand, and these natural resources that I think could bring incredible opportunity for us, I think of things like the Budahatchie River, even Rodout Falls, Marion County Lake, the Indian Mounds, the 40 acres of land that the city owns right on the riverfront, or a beautiful downtown. And so tonight, very quickly, what I wanted to present to you was a thought that several of us have been dreaming about, and it's by no means a finished plan. It is, it is a seed of opportunity that we would look forward to having a lot more input on. But we've been thinking about that Muntzmore property, that 40 acres that we have right there on the riverfront. And we've been thinking, and it's interesting if you look at that land and the layout of that 40 acres, when we looked at it sort of from an aerial view, it has the shape of an arrowhead. So it's not that it's an official name, but we just saw that and sort of affectionately refer to it now as Arrowhead Park. Because we begin to dream, and I want to ask you tonight, if you'll just quickly dream with me for a moment of what that 40 acres could possibly be. If we were to do this, use that 40 acres to develop a park that would celebrate and honor our history, our Indian heritage, and use it as a place for, that we could develop literally in its natural state, so to speak. It would, it would have the atmosphere, it would have the theme of our Indian heritage, while it would also have a theme that is rustic and natural, all the way from the parking lot, all the way through the park itself. So if you can just think and imagine with me, how, well, for one thing, how few cities have a river flowing through it like the Budahatchie River? And most of the cities that have a river flowing through it, San Antonio, or I've been to Chicago, which has many rivers, they utilize those rivers, they develop them, and they use them to their benefit. What if we took that 40 acres and developed that out as Arrow, let me just say Arrowhead Park, we can name it whatever y'all want to name it. But out, on that, in that park, we, several of us wrote down several ideas, and I won't go through all of this tonight. But if you could imagine of that 40 acres, having walking trails that lead to benches that are themed, that are well-lit and a rusty theme, we have bike trails, possibly birdwatching places, birdhouses everywhere, we have boating, canoes, inner tubes, a canoe run right there on the Budahatchie River, right there where people could come and rent their canoes from the city, or their inner tubes from the city, with an entrance right there from Arrowhead Park. We have bridges that are part of our walking trails. We have possibly an archery area, maybe even an increased area for our disc golf course, an Indian fire pit. We have possibly green open space with horseshoe pits, volleyball, basketball, anything that has to do with staying in a natural habitat or natural form. We have playground areas for the children, a river walk, rock climbing areas, ropes courses, a splash pad, which would be a blast for our children, maybe Indian statues throughout the park, swings that are all throughout the park, waterfalls, a wetting spot, zip lines. I think it would be beautiful to have maybe, think about this, if you had on the river a stage, that the stage itself, that behind it was the Budahatchie River, with people canoeing down the water, and you have sort of an amphitheater in front of it with a grassy area, where we could have concerts and city events right there on the river. So you've got a river walk along with a canoe run that is just pulling people from all over the area. Can you see that at all? Anybody? Can you...
Not too many people can. We're blessed for this, what you made.
Yes, we are. And these are the God-given gifts, that God has given us, these natural resources. If we were to put possibly, we've talked about, as you tear down the Muntzmore building, building a multipurpose building, what if you built that multipurpose building, design it, the design itself fits with the theme of Arrowhead Park, so that it's natural and rusty, but it still serves a multipurpose building, where you could have the Jerry Brown Arts Festival, or other things that we bring into the city? And, but it has that theme so that it blends into the whole park, so people that come to our events at the city, at the city building, or the multipurpose building, they walk down into our park and they see our beautiful park. What if inside that multipurpose building, you had an area for a snack bar, one-stop shop for things for sale, whether it's binoculars, or kites, or maps, or treasure maps? It has in there a place for our rentals, for canoes, inner tubes, hammocks, bikes, prokated horseshoes, all kinds of things that would be inside our multipurpose building. So it would just all work together within the 40-acre park. And the wonderful thing about this is we could advertise it all over the interstate. You're advertising the Budahatchie Canoe Run, or whatever we, Arrowhead Park Canoe Run, or whatever we name it. And you're advertising not only the canoe run, but the beautiful park itself and all the things our building could provide on that property. It's just, it's 40 acres that not many, not many cities have on a riverfront. It's an opportunity I'd hate to see us miss. Very quickly and far less time, what I'd like to present to the governor would be our vision for Arrowhead Park, but also very quickly to touch on this, possibly a pavilion downtown. A downtown pavilion that could also be built with that rustic feel. I've seen a lot of cities do this, and it is to their benefit. What if we had a pavilion that all spring and summer long, we could hold weekend farmers' markets and make it a regional farmers' market, where all of our people that would be interested could bring their produce to a beautiful pavilion and sell it and advertise it regionally? Have a stage on the end of the pavilion, so that when we have downtown festivals, we can have, we wouldn't have to rent stages and trucks, that usually are not well-saved anyway from having been on it. We could have a beautiful stage, and our people could go inside the pavilion and use it, in fact, even all the way up to Christmas. We could sell greenery and Christmas trees, or Christmas evergreen, or in the spring, you could sell shrubs and flowers. It could just, it would probably be a nine-month-use pavilion. Our park would be a 12-month-use park. So we would get a whole lot of time out of both of these things. And the last thing I'd like to present would be the development of our Indian Mounds, where that, it's just something unique we have as a city. And what if the canoe run started at Arrowhead Park, and we had several stops, but one of the stops, which would be about a three-hour run, one of the stops could be at the Indian Mounds, that are developed and with beautiful signage and historical markers. I mean, how many cities have an Indian mound with Judge Terrell Berry sitting up straight in a chair? I mean, that's just pretty interesting. And it should be on a marker that would be intriguing, along with all the other interesting history of that special place, with pavilions for picnics and people to come. So I think this is a unique opportunity we have as a city to take this. You know, when the governor came, and we just touched on this briefly, Governor Bentley sent to us that day, he said, "Bring me a plan, and we will look at it." And Governor Bentley was truly interested in developing our natural resources and bringing tourism to this area. In fact, he made mention that he had considerable amount of money to give away, to which we would say, we would be glad to be recipients of some. You know, while we cannot, not I or anyone else can guarantee that the state will help us, or that Governor Bentley would, no, we, no one can guarantee that. But let me say this, the potential is far greater for us. When we go down there and we present a plan, the potential of getting their help would be far greater for us, if we can do this, if we can offer matching funds with a well-prepared plan. You know, we have Ben Farmer and his group has actually put together a proposal of a great plan that possibly could, could help us, because we wouldn't want to do anything like this without a great plan to do it. And this is a very well-experienced group of people that could help do that. They helped develop the trails in Hodges, Hackleburg, and they've done a great job. So they've offered us a proposal to help us develop this idea. And I would love to take this along with many of you to our governor and present to him the potential that we have with a well-laid-out plan that's put together by whoever you choose to use. with a well-laid-out plan that's put together by whoever you choose to use. I think this is a great company, Ben Farmer and his company, or whoever you choose. But I would love to present that to him. I believe we can get their help. I believe we can, I can't guarantee it, but I believe that if we do it right, we could get their attention. And I think we have some incredible things to work with in our city. So to close tonight, this is what I want to ask. I want to ask you to do this. I know that right now we're looking at a city water park. I just want to ask you to do this. I'm not asking you not to do a swimming pool for the city, but I'd like to ask you if you would not put it on the 40 acres of the land on the Muncie Ware property. And I'm asking that because if we put a city park there, it would pretty much destroy the concept of a themed park of our Indian heritage. Because when you do a park like that, the whole place needs to permeate one theme. It's what they do at all parks that are successful. And if you have a lot of cement and water slides, it's going to distract from our beautiful Budahatchee River. A lot of cities have parks and water parks, but not many cities have the Budahatchee River flowing through. So if you're gonna put a pool somewhere, could we just put it somewhere else and leave that park for us to develop, to make it far more multipurpose and multicultural? And the last thing would be to ask you, in the funds that you're preparing for the water park, if you would keep in mind to reserve funds for us to develop some of these other things that I think could help our city in such an incredible way, that we could go to the governor and say we are willing to invest as a city with matching funds to see our natural resources developed. And these first three things are just the first three. I'd still love to someday touch on Rodout Falls and Marion County Lake and any other places we don't know about. We have a great city, and I want to see it develop to its fullest potential. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Karen. It's a great report. I don't know what to add to that, she's done a good job of explaining. We need to take that into consideration. The council will meet with you and discuss some ideas and put together on that thing. I think the property is very valuable to the city and many, many things we can do over there.
Sure.
The development of the river is gonna be a challenge, but it'll be something worth while for many, many years. The things you've asked probably wouldn't cost a lot for some of those things. I don't think there should be any problem trying to do as many as possible, just my opinion. But thank you for coming. Number six is a recommendation to allow Heath David to do some landscaping work at the Hamilton Baseball Field for a cost of $7,975. This money would come out of our new bond issued. It will be deposited in our First National Bank. So this would be one of the upgrade projects that we would spend our recreation upgrades.
Was this all or is there...
Well, we've got, you know, we set aside, we didn't set aside anything. Out of that $8 million, or actually only about $6, you know, we said approximately $2 million for building it and approximately $2 million for our park and maybe $2 million each or so for recreational upgrades. So, you know, there's not a detailed dollar budget for each thing because there's nobody knowing exactly. We have a round-up figure about what we need to spend.
Many, many people talked about it, so it's all part of the lining and...
We did that up at the park. This would be an addition to that. It wouldn't be nothing, they would come up.
Close to $100,000.
And we did get two bids, and this was among those bids. Is there a motion to do this?
I'd like to vote for it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do you want to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Paul, favor say aye. Last thing on our agenda tonight is the recommendation to purchase the banners for downtown Hamilton, $1,900, as previously requested by Kenny Dixon, the president of the Downtown Hamilton Association. I feel like it's something we should do, I don't have a problem with it at all. And we've already discussed it, everyone else, so is there a motion to purchase this?
I would motion for it.
Okay, great. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tim. Any other discussion? Paul, favor say aye.
Aye.
There's nothing else on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to...
Okay, Tim. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Paul, favor say aye.
How are you doing? Mayor, I'd like to ask one question. And I won't bother the city again with it. I still need access to property on Williamses Creek. Basically what the young lady is talking about. It's not a big commercialized scenic property. And I don't know who holds the street, whether it be the city or whoever owns the property at the present time. That was Mitchell subdivision back before Highway 43 changed course. And there's no more beautiful bluff area and scenery within the city than this encompassed in that area. Now, if I can't get permission from the city, if you don't own it, I'll have to resort to using probably an escalator, and I don't want to do that. Go in from the bottom side, go down the bluff here. But Allen Street has been there since 61, undeveloped. And I'm not asking the city to build that street. I'm just asking the city, if you're not gonna use that property, if you own it, I would like an easement, and I'll do that access, a slip. I believe it'd be beneficial to go in from the upper side as opposed to disturbing some of the bluff area. So if you want to sleep on it, I need an answer. I bought the property, it'll be two years, this December, ago. And I've yet to get, I've got to give an answer on the easement. The property is not for sale. It'll be used by the general public. And believe me, anyone who's ever been out that way and walked through that area, you just have to fall in love with it. I'm not in cahoots with anybody. I looked up on the property, and I've got two pieces of property that you own. But I'd like that access. If you, like I say, if the city don't own it, then I can either resort to buying a jointed property for access or go in on the bottom side with a bridge. But that'd be my, you know, our brother don't do that.
Mr. Lewis, you're talking about going in where your gate is now, going up around by that bluff?
Right, turn back right, follow the creek up there. There's probably about 500 feet that would have to be widened out.
Where this street you're talking about, you want to come in on the north side of that house.
Delray Road, north side, yeah. And I was trying to...
That's part of the great, great Mitchell, or the Mitchell...
Yeah. That was subdivision, that one that I... Dale Willbanks and his line, if the city turn upwards, if he's got land on both sides, most of the time, say the property, the State Highway Department, those things.
Was that put in, you said 61, now the new road, I think, come in there in '75, '76, somewhere in there. Did, before the new road come in there, that street was already lined out or deeded out? Before the new highway?
Well, 61 was one of the... The subdivision was recorded at the courthouse. And right now, I'm in limbo as to what I can do. You know, somebody down the way can take a piece of property for natural purposes. I don't have any idea or plans to build a house down in there. But I just want to ask that you get back with me, it's been a while. I'll vote whatever and my house will reply. So I believe the city in these opportunities, if they want to do that, it'd be great. And if not, I'll have it somewhere else. I'll order a biker or whatever I need.
Mayor, do you know if that's...
I'll get with Scott again in the morning, I tire, and see if the access you want to come into is off of 43 right past...
Just be straight across Willbanks.
Right past Willbanks. So you want to come off of 43 down to your property?
Right.
The word that used to be was an old road. It's grown up in the, or it's on the map as a road, but it's never been there.
Right, it's grown up.
I mean, since 1960, it's been on the map, but it's not on...
The Willbanks says 43.
Never been the belt. So you want to get access to your property so you can...
Right, from 43.
So you can build it.
Well, not only we, it's...
Or you want this, you want to know if this is a city gonna build around there?
No.
I don't want to say much more than that, but you want access so you can build it.
Right, right.
Who owns the property now, Willbanks?
Pardon?
Willbanks still own that property?
Yeah. That property, when you get down behind Willbanks' house...
Yeah.
Where he's talking about, it flattens out, as flat as Florida. It's beautiful down under that creek.
Yes, perfect.
I mean, you wouldn't think it does, but it flattens out, just completely flattens out if you go off of that hill and you can down the creek. I've been down there all over, it's beautiful.
It is.
Yeah. A young lady that's doing that project on Williamses Creek, she missed the boat on that piece of property. I mean, she's a hard worker and I wish her well, but so far as access and property... I wish I could help her in a way I can, I would, but it'd have to be a line of trail or a high control. I don't even know. Would you think you could do that?
I'll get you an answer.
We'll have that set, when I say we do.
I'll get an access, I mean, I'll get with Scott tomorrow here to leave, so I'll get back to Scott and see what the process is. If the council wants to do that, that's fine.
Okay. I appreciate it.
You can thank him.
Yeah.
Thank you.